We seem to disagree with that, Ann. It does have something to do with the system?
When the computer system was being discussed, and the requirements for updating from the old DOS system were being discussed, that was the time to create the interfaces between elements needing the interfacing between the parts of the database.
Yeah, I understand that.
That was the time that it was very rightfully, intelligently decided to have the building inspector have a module so he could prep his part of the building, of the business licenses. Good idea, great plan, it works well. It saves time. And I pointed out at that time that the same thing needed to happen with the clerk treasurer. But there, again, there's another thing happening here, and this is the symptom. That was the time to make it possible for a module to be created in the clerk treasurer's office to have a similar interface for an even larger number of business licenses and data, so that I can answer the questions of people who have business licenses, help them update their information, save time, do what I'm supposed to do, do what I was elected to do. However, that was, it was decided against my wishes and against my attempt to hope have a more efficient system to allow that to happen. Therefore, the person who sits in that office is totally dependent on the finance department. And the person at the front desk, and I'm going to push this just a little bit further, is instructed to not assist the city clerk treasurer.
A point of order here.
So I'm saying, I will finish this one sentence.
Please.
So, we can't have it both ways. We either have to make it so the system functions well, or we need to admit that there's a problem, and be brave, and face it, and deal with it. And I'm ready to deal with it.
Were there financial reasons for this?
Excuse me, I have a point of order here that we are away from how the computer system is operating. We are now, excuse me! We are now dealing with an inner-office dispute. That's not anything to do with how this system is operating. It's something to do with how authority is delegated. This is not something we should be discussing under the auspices of how the computer system is working. This is a separate issue altogether that should be the purview of the mayor. It's his responsibility on how that operates and how the administration operates. So, if you all want to meet privately with Ann or them, I encourage that. That's not something we should be discussing under how the computer system is working.
Mr. Mitchell?
We were having a discussion how the computer system working, Ann moved on. And we're still on the discussion of how the computer system works.
Sorry, I disagree.
Ann moved off of it, you made your point. And but telling the rest of us that we need to move on and have separate meetings, that's not what it was. I'm back on the issue about the computer system. I agree. The mayor is responsible for the administration of the city, and he's responsible for the personnel that are here, except for the elected ones, and how the city runs and the interpersonal relationships. And that needs to move over to him. And I would hope at some point, if interpersonal relationships or whatever else is going on in there, if it's getting in the way of the efficiency and the effectiveness of implementing a very expensive computer system and maximizing the benefit for the money that this council allocated to buy it, then something needs to be done about it.
I will reiterate, this has nothing to do with the computer system.
What I just said did. Thank you.
Any further from the council? Ms. Clark, one last statement.
I will admit that my last statement did take it off to the side. And I knew that I was stepping into some very tender territory by doing that. Up until that point, every single thing that I have said had everything to do with the computer system. And so for making that last comment, I apologize.
Okay, moving on. Any further discussion on the city computer system? If not, moves us on to discussion update on water leaks and meters. Before you, each one of you should have a letter in your packets from Dwayne. Looks like this.
I have this.
You should have, well, there should be a letter attached.
Yeah.
There it is, okay. I don't want to read this letter into the record. "August 11, 2014, Officer Mayor Morse Pate. Mr. Mayor, I have attached a summary of current meter technology and the reasons I selected the meter we are installing on our commercial accounts. The technology is new, and the manufacturer did not anticipate the global demand which created a delivery delay. We have arranged the meters by routing numbers and identified several billing errors. At this point, I am even more convinced that the meter replacement will increase our revenue. The large meters have a 95% rate of replacement need, while the residential meters have a 75% replacement rate need. We have replaced five commercial meters and 25 residential meters, with 10 large meters due to arrive next week. A representative of CENUS meters will meet with me on 8/2614, give me a date for the 100 meters that will replace all the meters two-inch and above. Also looked at Mueller and Badger meters, including pricing for automatic read. I believe the best course is to install the meters in-house with the ability to add automatic read at a later date for the next several weeks. This will show the replacement timeframe and how it affects other tasks and repairs. If this shows that a bid is justified, we will already have the replacement meters in stock. We have repaired several leaks, including two on Spring Street in the last month, which are the ones in the middle of the road down here in Spring and Main. Overall, we have experienced fewer leaks in the distribution system in the past few years. Water sales are running below anticipated volume going out."
Right.
And then the attached document, I'll let you all read that. I'm not going to even attempt that one.
Technical, but interesting.
Yes. So any questions on that one? Read your material, and then we will try to answer what question we can. Mr. Mitchell?
No, just a public acknowledgement of thanking Dwayne for an excellent, timely job in giving us an update. It's appreciated when council sits here and allocates large amounts of money and/or implements new ordinances or procedures or policies or whatever. It's kind of nice to occasionally get some feedback on the changes that were made and whether they are effective and they're working. It's appreciated, as is Lonny taking the time to come in here and give us feedback.
Okay. Any further on that issue? Not, moves us to number five, discussion of the two fire stations.
Move to discuss.
I believe Reese is here.
Sergeant.
Say it.
Sergeant.
Okay. Reese, you can jump in both feet.
Evening, Mayor, evening, council. Any questions from last meeting? I know it was brought up, about the two fire stations. I'm here to answer any questions, or like to elaborate on a little bit, or...
Mr. McClellan, get your hand.
Tell us what you need.
Yeah. Didn't you already have the roof ready done over here, prosecutor?
Yes, it's been done. That's all been taken care of.
No more leaks?
No more leaks.
And you're building a fire station now? A rural station?
Rural station, south of town, which that station's completed.
And it's, and how big a unit will it house?
It's, let's see, well, the building is 84 by 40.
By 40?
Yes.
What's the length of the biggest truck you have?
Yeah, ladder truck, I think, is 35 feet.
So it could be housed out there?
Well, with ISO, it needs to be within, I looked today, it needs to be within two and a half miles of any structure that's more than three stories, so like the Crescent Hotel, get on around the loop at the Palace Bath House, and it'd be pulling it away from, as far as ISO ratings concern. So it really needs to stay here in the city. One of my main reasons of looking at building, possibly doing another station up by Murdy Maze, where I've been kind of looking at, is we currently have four stations. And I'd like to downsize and get us down to where we only have three stations, so we can kind of cut on maintenance and utility costs, not only be maintaining three stations. And by having one by Murdy Maze, that would serve going out west and going towards the Crescent, and of course, the downtown area.
May I continue, please, if I may? The, so the station on White Street, in your report, it's only been used a couple of times in the last five years, and barely fits the truck.
Yep.
However, this station down here is still really functional.
Still use it.
In many, many ways. So, you know, why not just sell the White Street, put it in this one down here, and keep this one? I am not for building another fire station.
Well, there again, by measuring the road miles, ladder trucks, two and a half miles with ISO, a pumper truck has to be every mile and a half. So this station, I've measured it going from here out west, it's pushing two miles.
You know, we just can't have everything.
I know, but, you know, I'm just...
I know what we got into, the last fire station, and I am not for it.
And other problems, I'll just continue on with problems. The downtown station, one of these days, we are going to have to replace this ladder truck. It's 35-plus years old, I don't remember the exact year model it is, but newer trucks, newer ladder trucks, are much taller than what we have. And in order, there again, to park it in there, we're going to be same boat. These stations weren't built for these larger apparatuses being built in today's world. I'd like to kind of move on with the project, not necessarily next year we start building something, but at least move forward and find out, you know, what can we get for these buildings, or what they're worth, and at least come up with a plan to where we can start, three, five years down the road, we have a plan to where, when the time comes, we can move forward.
From having worked in the shop right down here for 15 years, it's hard traffic-wise, getting these guys in and out of this one over here. I mean, it is really rough. It's dangerous when they're trying to come out, sirens wailing or not, it's dangerous. Trying to get them back in during the season, it's like, oh my God. It's hard. I wish we could just plan and use this parking lot right here to put one, you know, where they didn't have to mess around with traffic. But yeah, if there is something we can do, we need to be thinking about it and looking. And I thought we were having a major building problem with this one, aside from the roof.
We do have issues with...
A structural problem.
Well, with the headers above the doors. I am going to address that very soon, because the concrete is starting to fall apart on it.
And other words, this building across the street needs $42,000 worth of...
Roof has already been done.
Repairs. I mean, $42,000 is already been spent on repairing it?
No, the roof part of that has already been spent.
Oh, well, the roof, okay. Well, we'll knock off $2,500 for the roof. But, okay, so you're running on $40,000, so you're thinking of spending $40,000 to repair a building, you obviously have to do this, which is going to be non-functional when you have to buy a new fire engine. Does this building qualify as an asset that we could possibly sell to recover some money to finance a new?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Can somebody go pick up that thread? Go ahead, I yield to the gentleman across the table.
Well, I'm not going to pick up that thread, but I am going to ask, have we done any preliminary cost calculations for this station?
No, not yet, I haven't, no.
We don't have even an order of magnitude cost. And the location you're thinking of is, what, there's a lot there?
Yeah, it's across from Joey Motel, it's next to Murdy Maze.
Yeah, yeah, is that the location?
Yes.
Is that, would that be suitable for all the big ladder trucks and...
We could do a large enough station there, yeah, we can, I mean, for future growth.
For future growth?
Yeah, for, you know, when we do need to replace this ladder truck later down the road.
I wasn't here during the construction of the newest station, but I do understand that there was some cost overruns, and there were some geopolitical issues, and foundation issues, things of that matter.
Yeah, I wasn't involved in that one.
Okay. You know, I think we, you know, before we go much further, I don't see why we should keep the White Street location unless you just had to have a truck there.
Mainly, right now, that station is just serving as just to have something on paper, so we can cover that in the town.
But it's not, we haven't used it, though.
It is usable, but being that it's kind of, there again, it's kind of off that direction, and not many volunteers, actually, I only have one that lives out west of town, so it's...
I could see the need for a new station, but we need to have some, we have to have something to talk about.
Yeah, numbers, yeah.
You know?
I agree. And that's kind of like where I'm at tonight, or I'd like to know what the properties are worth, or what they're valued at.
Could we direct you to find that out, or through the mayor's office?
Do we even have to?
Have you?
I mean, you can interview that, can't you?
Yeah.
So you just get a real estate agent to give you, you know?
Mr. McClellan?
Yeah, as far as, you know, the trouble getting in and out of this building over here, I understand it is a little more difficult because of the ladder truck. But, you know, I was on the department for 20 years, and that's just, there's less people visiting now than there was then, so...
And it's so bad.
It's always going to be bad.
I'm not even watching the tourists with them trying to get in and out.
Mickey, I've been there.
Yeah?
Don't worry about it. That's just the way it is.
You shouldn't worry about it.
Mr. Mitchell?
I'm not done.
Okay, we'll leave you to say so.
Okay. Now, then you've also got, you know, your ladder truck. What are you going to ladder? You going to ladder the Basin Park Hotel? I don't think so. You might ladder the Crescent Hotel, maybe. Maybe some of the buildings downtown. So if the need for a taller ladder truck is really not going to be necessary. I mean, it's just, how many feet will this one go?
It's 50 foot. And I've, for us, I've been looking at, not pricing, but looking at newer model 50-foot ladder trucks, and they're extremely quite a bit taller, as far as the truck.
I see, in that respect.
In that respect, as far as backing in.
How many miles are on the one that we have?
Ah, dear, I'd have to go over and look, there, I don't know off the top of my head.
So, I mean, it may have a little age on it, but other than that, it's a fine, serviceable unit.
Yeah, for now it is. I've spent probably, the past couple of years, almost, a little over 10 grand on it, so...
So you're not saying to get rid of that ladder truck, you're saying, don't get a longer ladder?
We're talking about trucks, we're talking about buildings.
Yeah.
Let's get back to the building part of this. Yes?
Wouldn't it be possible, Mayor, since this falls under your jurisdiction, could you work with the fire chief and help him develop the plan about disposing, and the long-range plan, and the cost? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Because I don't think it needs to be at our council table right now, and...
We will start on that pretty quick.
But thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome. Anybody else?
Thank you, Reese.
All right, nothing else, moves to number six, resolution seat grants from Arkansas Parks and Tourism.
Wanting to discuss?
Second?
Second.
Mr. Levine. We have lost Mr. Levine.
He may be in the restroom.
I'm a fellow sleeping guy.
Well, we could always take a break.
No.
This is half an hour early.
No.
I didn't know that whole bag was here.
Well, you all have the resolution before you.
Do you want to jump to a different topic? About discussion of conflict of interest, number eight. Come back to seven.
Okay, motion made and seconded, on our favor, say hi. All right, discussion number eight, floor is open. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes. Questions for the attorney? Do, I can't find anywhere in the employee handbook, or in the municipal league, I can't find any reference material on the concept of conflict of interest. I can't find the definition that is utilized, and I can't find a process for one. For example, if somebody thought that there might be a conflict of interest with a city employee, or somebody sitting on a commission, how is that handled in the city at present?
Well, Arkansas law is very underdeveloped in the area of conflict of interest, as a statewide issue. And I think that it has not been addressed fully on a state level, and therefore, it's probably not addressed fully on the local level. If the council wanted to include that in the employee handbook, a conflict of interest section, or a stronger section on it, you certainly approve the handbook, and you could write something of your own volition. But as far as Arkansas law, it's very much left up to the individual as to whether or not they are violating conflict of interest if they take a vote on something. Now, that more addresses non-individuals covered by the handbook, because that is more aimed at the elected officials. And so, where a conflict of interest might develop, at a lower level, where the policy manual would apply, I would think might be with a department head purchasing from a local business that they had some kind of association with. That would certainly come under the mayor's ability to discipline and/or look into if that person was doing that on a regular basis. And it might be a choice at some point where a mayor would have to address that by possibly relieving the department head of duty. Now, that can be done with all the department heads, except the building official, without necessarily council's approval.
Sure.
It'd have to be council approval if it was a building official. I don't know that there's any real area where it has become an issue, not been inquired of by this mayor, or one of the other mayors in the last couple of terms, although three terms ago, I guess there was an issue of whether a certain individual could hire an individual into their department was related. And there was some issue, then the council got involved at that point, and decided not to grant a allowance of hiring.
So I understand the employee, because the mayor is the administrator of the city and everything. So let's move over to commissions and people sitting on commissions that we set. When you have commissioners that are sitting in there, how would the concept, if there is no definition? I know at the state level, they only, the two areas that they discuss, conflict of interest, is with the judiciary, which is lawyers, which makes kind of sense, and then the legislature. It seems to be the only place that they zero in on. But when you get down to municipal government or municipal level, when you have commissions and everything, where does that come? For example, if you have a commissioner, something that's running in a commission, but there is money funneling in to say something they promote, and even though it may be going to a family member, not them per se, who's going to decide if that's a conflict of interest?
Well, and that's my question. The other commissioners on the commission certainly would have some voice and the ability to request someone to step back. But the actual decision to step back from making a vote on a commission would have to be the individual to the commissioner, him or herself. Now, that does not mean that if they're funneling money into their own pocket, or into their relatives' pocket, that they're not subject also to removal by whichever procedure is allowable for removal from that commission. Each commission has, there are ways to remove commissioners, depending on the particular commission.
But you see, well, that's kind of like the fox watch in the hen house, and if you're waiting for the individual commissioner to decide that they're in fact violating, and that's my concern. I'm bringing the issue up about the issue of conflict of interest, the perceptions within municipal government from, on two levels. Employee over here, which we've got resolved, can go through the mayor, and that's fine. But on the other area, the process is a little confusing. And we, as elected officials and people sitting on commissions, have a higher duty of transparency and equity in doing the right thing. And at what point, when, and that's not saying somebody's intentionally doing it, it's this devious plot, that, you know, I'm going to somehow get all this money and do it. I don't think people intentionally, I hope, do that. What I'm concerned about, I know I probably do, but trying to be nice about it, but the point is, there isn't a process, and I'm just a little bit concerned. I know there was no education or anything done when you set on a commission that, hey, there is this issue of conflict of interest, and you need to be aware of it and careful. There's no education that goes on out there, so assuming that everybody just knows is, I think it's a gray area, and there's opportunity for improvement. That was my whole point.
Mr. Snyder?
The one thing that people in general tend to overlook when it comes to commissioners, commissioners are citizens first. Conflict of interest will rarely be involved when it is an individual, citizen's thought, feeling, vote, whatever, on a commission. And we could call a spade a spade and spell out what we're talking about here, since everybody knows anyway.
No, they don't.
I'm not doing, I'm saying we could.
I didn't go there.
But what I am saying is, the situation that has instigated this discussion involves a citizen who also is paid indirectly by the city.
No, that's not where I was going. You're wrong.
Whatever.
No.
Anyway, this has been brought up by a couple of local people, too. This person's decision had nothing to do with the city, nor his job. It was based on his citizen, being a citizen of Eureka. That kind of case, there is no conflict of interest. We have had the kind...
Point four, we're going off into that nebulous area again.
No, I'm not going in the freezer on that.
Yeah, you are.
That is what brought it up.
No.
It is.
Okay. Let's get back on track. Any further discussion on the conflict of interest? Mr. Perkypod?
Mr. City Attorney. So what you're saying is that commissioners, you know, city council members are all self-policing?
Not totally, but they're expected to be policemen of their own actions first. And commissioners, as I said, can be removed by various means, depending on the commission they sit on. And council members can be removed by certain legal actions if they're lining their pockets too well.
Too well. I do not know if they can.
You need to count them out.
It would take an ethics violation or criminal violation for that to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
You are. Any further discussion on conflict of interest? If not, we revert back to number six.
Seven. Oh, six, yes.
Six, yes. Resolution seat grants from Arkansas Parks and Tourism. And Mr. Levine.
Second.
Floor is open, Mr. Levine.
Mayor, council, good evening.
Wait, I have a question before we even...
Wait, I have a question before we even start on this. Didn't I get another resolution? Wasn't there another resolution that mentioned money and how much this costs and what our share of it would be? I got that on my email about two weeks ago.
That was just an email.
And this is not the same resolution on getting a grant?
There's two.
For Parks Grant.
It was just an email.
Yeah, well...
It was in the body of an email, it wasn't a resolution.
It wasn't a resolution, okay, never mind.
Mr. Levine.
Hopefully, I somewhat made it clear during my email what this resolution's all about for the benefit of the public, if you'll allow me very briefly. We are applying for grant funds to build a pavilion and a playground at Lake Leatherwood City Park. The resolution itself, you've probably noticed, reads that the city will be responsible for the, the grantee's half of the, of the grant money. In this case, the parks is going to be responsible. It's not unusual, in fact, it's more normal than not that grantors will, will hold the city as being the responsible party for grant money. In this case, it'll be taken out of the 1/8 cent sales tax that we've, we have for Lake Leatherwood City Park. It's, we've done these the past several years, and it's just, that's the way it works. And we have always been accountable for that money. Yes, sir?
Bruce, you have, have you got some bids or some ideas on cost?
Well, we, yes, we did. And then our grant supervisor upped the ante by asking us to take approximately 425 feet of supply line and put it underground. Electric supply line.
Ah, electric.
So, right now, it looks to me, and I would not be surprised if we're going to be pushing $150,000 on this grant.
For your part?
Correct.
Well, that's actually 50/50 anyway.
It'd be 75 for us to match their 75.
Right.
Then there is always a case of grantee's remorse, where you look at a grant about a week before you send it in and go, oh, my God, that's going to cost more, or, oh, my God, that's going to cost less. So, I'm going to say $150,000 is probably the ceiling.
Pretty good chunk already?
Yes, by, by the time this grant, if it comes to fruition, we will have that money already put aside. And Butch Berry is our architect, and for the benefit of the public, because I'm so proud of this, and I hope you all are also. This is design that, that Butch has come up with. And it's just outstanding. And I, I think this is going to be an attraction unto itself, much less a needed place for people to picnic and...
How much bigger than the old one that's out there?
The old one, the, is, we call it a cook pavilion, because it'll, you can maybe cover 10 to 12 people underneath it. This is...
It's more fireplace than it is.
Yeah. This is designed to accommodate over 100. It'll seat 70 and accommodate more than that. This, this is going to be a fantastic facility for, for the city in general. And along with that is a playground, which may not look like much, but it costs $50,000. And we intend to add, subtract a few things from here, and maybe add some more natural features. But they will be within vision of the pavilion, which I think is really important to parents watching their kids. They can be in the pavilion, they look, and there's, there's kids are right there playing. Yes, sir?
Quick.
You go ahead.
Somebody go ahead.
I'll go ahead. And where's this going to be located?
This will be down in that first lower meadow, down below the park, below where the RV spots are.
The gate to Ghost...
Within 150 feet of the beach, 200 feet.
So, the geese will have a place to come in and crap on everywhere.
Yeah, it'll come out all around.
So, we've got a playground here, and we've got a swim beach here, and we've got a pavilion. It's just a, it's a wonderful mix.
That sounds like a nice one.
Yes, sir.
Just a quick, so even though this sentence is here, "City Council is aware and appraised of the above-mentioned project and will provide the local portion of the development." You, you're saying that you, you're getting it out of the 1/8, and that's just the way it is? It's, the city's not, even though it's here because it's required, the park pays for it?
It's standard grant language.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
On the, on the elevations page, on the bottom, on the north elevation, is that you and your wife?
No, that's my kitty, though, that's on that table.
Oh, it is, all right, I just thought maybe that was you.
Okay, any further on that?
Thank you for asking.
Motion to assign a resolution, approve on first reading, yes.
I have another question.
Okay.
You have a question? Yeah, okay. Okay, this, this for the attorney. Okay, this is a resolution, so this is not a binding contract. If it says here, "The city council will provide the local portion of the development cost of the entire project," this does not bind us to do that if something goes wrong, and the parks are in arrears and may end up owing $75,000 to somebody?
Actually, it could, because our budget is adopted by resolution. And I think what you've got is what's been done for years. You have to somewhat take on faith what Parks is telling you, that they will do it out of their 8th of a cent, and believe that they're going to be able to do that. But ultimately, your budget is adopted by resolution, so this would, could come back to you.
But yet, we don't know how much this is going to be. This is just sort of, we're guaranteeing to pay half of whatever it amounts to, and we're only guessing at what it amounts to at this point. Is that what, what's happening here?
Technically, yes. Now, it depends on how much, it depends on how much you can put your trust in the fact that they've done this repeatedly, and they've covered their debt several times.
They do have a dedicated revenue source for this.
Well... And you could also divert other funds that are theirs later.
Okay. Mr. Perkypod.
To away your concerns, this, this has no numbers in it here. All this does is it cuts, it cuts Bruce loose on the application for the grant. And he's got a chance to say, well, yeah, we want it, or no, we don't want it, want the grant at that point in time. And part of that will be whether he has money dedicated to it or not. And it's going to be part of his due diligence. So, and he's got that dedicated tax source, so.
Just add to that, that, you know, if they, the sooner they get that in,
the quicker it gets done, and the less it costs. We know as time goes by, things cost more.
What you cut off date on?
August 29th is the grant date.
That's for this year, so.
Yeah, well...
Mr. Levine.
I'd move to assign this resolution a number and read it for passage.
Second.
Hold on, favor say aye.
Aye.
You post.
Resolution number will be 647. Whereas Eureka Springs, Arkansas seeks to improve the recreational facilities and wishes to seek grant funding assistance. And whereas, in order to obtain the funds necessary to develop and/or improve the site for such a recreational area, it is necessary to obtain a 50/50 matching grant from the Arkansas Department of Parks and Tourism's Outdoor Recreation Grant Program. And whereas the plans for such recreation area have been prepared, and the price therefore has been established. And whereas this governing body understands, the grantee and grantor will enter into a binding agreement which obligates both parties to policies and procedures contained in the Land and Water Conservation Fund Grants Manual, including but not limited to the following. The park area defined by the project boundary map submitted in the application must remain in outdoor recreational use perpetuity, regardless if the property is bought or developed with matching grant funds. And all present and future overhead utility lines within the project boundary must be routed away or placed underground. And the project area must remain open and available for the public use at all reasonable times of the day and year. Facilities can be reserved for special events, league play, et, but cannot be reserved, leased, or assigned for exclusive use. And the project area must be kept clean, maintained, and operated in a safe and healthy manner. City Council is well-aware and apprised of the above-mentioned project and will provide the local portion of the development cost of the entire project. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that the mayor is hereby authorized to make application to the Arkansas Department of Parks and Tourism for the assistance to develop recreational facilities in Lake Leatherwood City Park located at 1303 County Road 204 for the city. Therefore, such application shall be submitted as expediently as possible.
Thank you. Moves us on to number seven, resolution granting a conservation easement to the Arkhan Hall, Arkansas Historic Preservation Program for the log building at Harmon Park. Arkhan Hall?
Second.
This is slightly different, but we have already obtained a grant to work on the log building, which is called the, the Harmon Park Trolley Barn, which it used to be, or at least was the entrance to the, to the stage, the 3,500-seat amphitheater in back of our office. We received the grant, the estimate that was made through getting bids by contractors, estimated the repair at a little over $21,000. That was replacing some foundation logs, painting, new roof, and tuck pointing the chimney. And the, the state is willing to, to give us 2/3 of that cost, a little over $15,000. In order to, to fulfill our end of the bargain, we have to grant the state a historic easement, which means that any time in the future, any type of work that we want to do on the building will have to be run through Little Rock. And they pretty much follow all the standards that our local historic district does. They go to the interiors, Secretary of the Interiors, whatever. And, but anyway, long story short, I, I think it's a good deal. We're just giving them a 15-foot perimeter in front or in back, where it takes in the rockwork, and 10-foot around the sides. So, the rest of the park's not affected by the easement.
Mr. Mitchell.
A question for the attorney. Can we give an easement on a resolution? I thought we usually give easements and vacates and rides away and everything by ordinance.
In this instance, let's see.
Is it usually utility easements?
I, I read this thing that Bruce gave. I'm sorry, I need to wait for your opinion.
Well, well, Mr. Weaver's thinking, let me just, the easement document itself is, I think it's 23 pages. So, this is a resolution to enter into that agreement.
Now, I went to your... Does that make any difference? I went to that website, Arkansas Historic Preservation. It was only three pages long. And it says typically, the easement involves a surrender of some right that as the owner, you would otherwise have, such as the right to modify the exterior or to use adjacent space in a way that might compromise the historic character.
So, that's the explanation of what an easement is. The easement is again, oh, I'm sorry, 16 pages long. And it clearly spells out all of the particulars. That's more of a summary.
So, back to the question, resolution or ordinance?
Well, since it is a granting of a permanent easement, it actually would probably fall more under the normal of an ordinance, because an ordinance normally is what is used to make a permanent change in law. A resolution is typically a temporary change, and the effect of this would be a permanent change.
Well, I hate to com, to create more conflict, but by that token, none of those resolutions that we've had to create those ball fields, they created a permanent, in perpetuity, usage of those fields. So, those were all done by resolutions. Just, just saying.
How fast do you need this decided on?
I, I think we need it to get in the two-week period.
Yes.
Two things. One, I think you can get ahold of these people and, and find out real quickly with a phone call if, if it's something that's required. I mean, I'm sure that's not the first time they've run into this, and if it was, it would be in their packet. Secondly, it's not, it's not your standard type of an easement. It's not like I'm giving you access across my property for ingress and egress. It's, 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 it's an easement for control of future development and that kind of thing. So, it's, I mean, it's, it's just, it's an easement, but it's different.
Evidently, the state feels that same way, because they do this for the recreational easements. We can never take those ball fields. We can never do anything different with those ball fields, but keep them as a recreational area, because we signed a contract which was, which was done by resolution.
We can't sell for a hotel.
No.
Mr. Mitchell.
Well, I'm confused, because my three-page summary that you put in your email said, "Since easements reflect the wishes of the grantor, the property will be protected regardless of who the future owners may be. Should the property be sold, the easement continues to bind the new owner, and the title passes with the assessment in force. Although easement agreements are final, the Arkansas Historic Preservation Program allows changes to the property subject to approval." It looks to me like they're pretty well grabbing a hold of something for perpetuity. And so, I'm more comfortable going, I'm more comfortable with our attorney issuing an opinion to council on which way we should go, and then I'll go that way.
At this point, as Oliver McClellan said a moment ago, if they are comfortable with a resolution, you're not binding yourself into something that's a problem. The resolution is actually for their benefit. It is not necessarily, if they're, if they're not comfortable that that's secure enough on their part, then they should be asking for an ordinance. If they're only asking for a resolution, you're, you're not creating a problem for the city, you're creating a potential problem for them.
Okay, then I'll go with that.
This is not part of that children's use-only property that we've had come up before us before?
No.
This part isn't? Okay, where your, where the Parks Office is, next to it is the building that was used by Eureka Kids. Where is this in regards to those two buildings?
This is actually the log building, the office, and 15-foot in front and 10-foot around.
I thought all of that was, all of that land was part of donation for kids only. I mean, you know what I mean.
I know exactly what you mean.
Yeah. So, I mean, so if that, if that back part that you're talking about is part of that for kids only, the resolution wouldn't matter, because it's already designated kids only. So, we couldn't, like, build an apartment building or something?
Mr. DeVita.
Yes.
I, I think time is of the essence here. If, if we go ahead and pass the resolution and, and the Preservation Society in Little Rock fields, that's not what they want, then we can address it at that time. So, I make a motion that we assign this resolution a number and pass it, and read it for passage.
Hold on, favor say aye.
Aye.
You post.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Resolution number will be 648. Resolution to grant a conservation easement to the Arkansas Historic Preservation Program for the Harmon Park Trolley Barn Office. Whereas the Eureka Springs Parks and Recreation Commission Office Building, located at 532 Spring Street, is in need of repair. And whereas the City of Eureka Springs has been awarded a historic preservation restoration grant from the Arkansas Historic Preservation Program to provide financial assistance to make these repairs. And whereas one of the conditions for this financial assistance is the conveyance of a preservation-conservation easement on the log building known as the Harmon Park Trolley Barn Office at 532 Spring Street. And whereas the preservation-conservation easement allows the City of Eureka Springs to retain ownership and possession of this historic landmark while... to retain ownership and possession of this historic landmark while granting the Arkansas Historic Preservation Program the authority to protect the historical and architectural characteristics of the property. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Section one, a preservation-conservation easement on the log building known as the Harmon Park Trolley Barn Office and the land immediately surrounding it may be conveyed to the Arkansas Historic Preservation Program.
Thank you. All right, we've dealt with number eight. Moves us on to number nine, discussion of second quarterly financials. Motion to discuss. Second?
Second.
Flows open. Mr. McClung?
I, I think in, that we can forego that in fact, because we're getting ready to have a mid-year budget review. Oh, I'm sorry.
This is required by state law, and it takes three minutes.
Oh, okay, yeah, all right. I see what you're gonna do.
Never mind.
And it is ACA fourteen forty-three five oh six, and the council is to be offered the opportunity to review five specific things on a quarterly basis. You have payroll, cash receipts, this is for the last six months, the clearing account, that is checks that are not payroll, the bank reconciliation, and this book that lives in the finance director's office is the debt service book. So if you need any of that information, you can come and look at it or make, have copies made. That's it.
Great discussion. If not, we will move on to number ten, update on clean city ordinance, and then we'll by neglect, motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss.
Second?
Second.
In your packet, you have a letter from Bobby Ray, the billing official. If you want me to read this into the record, or you can read it and discuss it. Okay. Uh, dated August eleventh, two thousand fourteen, subject clean city ordinance update to the City of Eureka, Eureka Springs City Council, list of homes for possible demolition by neglect. I will read the addresses and not the names. Fourteen Singleton, thirty-seven Alexander, thirty-five Benton, five Douglas, eleven Magnetic, and one thirty-two North Main. He further states that he has had not, he has not had to issue citation for any minimum maintenance violations. Most of individuals are correcting their violations in a timely manner. Sincerely, Bobby Ray. Yes, sir.
Yes, I'll send Bobby Ray a separate email that, of some properties that he's aware of, and he works very diligently with them, and they haven't responded yet. So his, most individuals is probably a, a fair statement on his part. That's all I have to say.
Okay. All right, any further questions on that one? Not moves us on to number eleven, which is discussion noise ordinance, motion to discuss.
So moved. Second?
All right, I have a letter, or an email actually, from Chief Hyatt that states the following. It is dated August eleventh, two thousand fourteen. Morris, from June the first, two thousand fourteen to today, this day, the officers have written thirty-two city noise ordinance tickets to vehicles with noisy mufflers. That does include warnings and hard copies. It does not include other non-vehicle violations, which I know there have been a couple of musicians who have received warnings for loud, you know, amplified music. If you want to find out details on the rest of those, then that's good. But thirty-two as of June the first. Yes, sir.
That's remarkable, and, and I think it's, it's a testament that the police department goes to great effort to discuss the issue of noise with the people that they consider a violation first. They don't just rush out there and give somebody a ticket. They try very hard to, to have a discussion with the person about the noise and then as a final resort, they do that. And I, I think that'll, that'll go a long ways in, in helping that situation and, and for the future. And I think the chief and his department are to be thanked for the enforcement part of looking at the issue of noise in Eureka Springs.
Okay, just, just a little bit of update on, on that situation, the noise ordinance. On the east end of the city out by the cemetery, we, of course, you know that we did post the new noise ordinance strictly enforced sign. There's also the smaller noise ordinance strictly enforced, no Jake breaking allowed sign, which follows that. So there's two on the east end of town. At the top of Plain Hill, there is still one of the small noise ordinance enforced signs. The big one, we're still kind of fighting with the city to figure out what we can do. The state, yeah, the state. They're getting, they're real picky about stuff. Anyway, moving on. Moves us to number twelve, which is discussion of fluoride. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second that.
Flows open. Ms. Snyder?
Okay, just an update for right now. I have been working very closely with a person who has many, 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 many years of experience on the fluoride situation. I'm getting a lot of assistance from him. Right now, we are looking very heavily into due diligence of the law and basically who is accountable from the state in regards to what they have passed. We expect to have, from this mandate that they did, we expect to have full transparency for our citizens on every single detail. Unfortunately, our legislators who passed this were aware the talk is cheap and easy and most people don't pursue. We will be pursuing. It's gonna be interesting. It's gonna be real interesting. It's gonna be probably a thousand percent effective. This is a very good positive outlook in what we're coming down to. That's about really all I can say right now. Next meeting should be really good. Everybody be here.
Have, have we done anything requesting a review by the Attorney General, the State Attorney General?
Not at this point. At this point, we are going to start at one level and narrow focus down further and further and further. And he's already been approached one time, right after he signed off on this, and didn't really give any kind of feedback.
Okay.
Any further?
Me.
Moves us on to number thirteen, discussion of length of time for loading zone behind the auditorium, motion to discuss. Mr. DeVito?
So moved.
Second?
Flows open.
We need, we need to have an ordinance, because any changes in loading zones and stuff are required by ordinance. When they're loading into the auditorium, they're getting ticketed, musicians and festivals and such like that. So they've asked that we could provide thirty minutes?
Hour.
An hour? An hour loading zone behind the auditorium? Because they have, I mean, the equipment's gotta be right there to go up on the lift, so we need to have an ordinance to allow an hour load in or load out behind the auditorium.
I'll add to that. Or maybe I just, is that a motion, I guess? Is that?
I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion to establish a one-hour loading zone for loading in and loading out of the auditorium on First Street, behind the auditorium.
I'll second that. And if I may go ahead.
You may go ahead.
Yeah, and it's, and it's, it's, it'll always be preceded by a phone call to the, either City Hall or the police department. So it's, they know that it's gonna be happening. It's not like it's just, hey, you know, I'm, I'm here and I've only been here thirty minutes. It's, it's gonna be, you know, it's, it's.
Scheduled.
Yeah, basically scheduled.
All be described in the ordinance. All to be described in the ordinance.
Sure. I'm astounded that we've even given tickets. I don't understand this.
Well, if they don't have a loading zone, then give them a ticket.
Mr. Perkypod?
Can this not be handled by, like, a parking pass or something like that that's handed out to people that are scheduled to play there? I mean, just, you put it on your windshield, that's what you do in the big city.
That's probably what I'm saying, astounding.
I mean, this, this, I guess my question is, that's one question. Second question is, we're not gonna change the physical, we're not gonna change the parking stripes there, because that's a, that's a fire zone right there. I mean, that's red stripe, you know? Because we wouldn't want anybody, visitors or locals alike, parking there for an hour or more.
Heaven forbid.
I mean, so have we thought about that? I mean, have you discussed, you know, the parking pass thing instead of having to go through an ordinance? I mean.
We've done this before on the city council.
Yes, sir.
Well, we need to establish a physical spot, and we don't have that.
Yes, sir.
Well, I'll agree with the physical spot. I, I'll go for that, but could we use a, a parking pass instead of having to go through the ordinance sort of thing?
Go ahead.
All, all of our loading zones have required an ordinance to establish them, and in essence, we are establishing a loading zone.
But it's unofficial loading zone.
No, it's an official loading zone.
But it's labeled as a fire zone. That's what, that's what I'm saying.
You wanna be careful not to violate your own ordinances.
Yeah.
I'm so confused.
Mr. Perd, you have an opinion on that?
Loading, loading zones are done by ordinance, and they're required now. How you're gonna exactly, other than the requirement that they notify City Hall and/or the police department, how you're gonna keep other people out of it unless you do keep it painted red? It's gonna be difficult.
Well, it's still getting painted red. It's gonna stay red.
So, I mean, it's gonna have, it needs to have some kind of marking that shows physically where for people need to park.
Mr. Perkypod?
I, I'm not trying to complicate it or anything. It just seems to me like anybody who's playing is playing a specific event at the auditorium, and either, either whoever's in charge of the auditorium has hired that person, should be responsible for getting a parking pass and say, hey, listen, guys, how many trucks do you have? Two? Okay, here's two passes here. Don't stay here and water them an hour.
About one at a time. Doesn't know we can still get through.
I'm just saying.
Can all be prescribed in the ordinance, however you wanna do it.
Can it just be an amendment to the existing ordinance?
I'm not sure that there's an existing ordinance that covers that particular area, but it, it could be just an amendment to our.
Red zone, so I'm sure it is. Unless it's, unless it's not, I mean, if it's not under ordinance already, then, then why, let's go park there.
It's so hard.
Well.
People do. And they get tickets.
Mr. Weaver, time?
It, it shouldn't be that difficult to create, just an amendment to the code. Now, I would make one suggestion to you that you might wanna consider while you're looking at this. Instead of notifying City Hall that they're going to load in and out, it might be better to have them notify the fire department, or the, and/or the police department, because they're the two that's gonna be running emergency vehicles through there.
Instead of being, sometimes it'll be that, it'll be the police department that would be.
Fire department, though, is the one that's gotta get a ladder truck possibly through there.
We call them both, how's that?
So a motion, Mr. DeVito?
And that, the language should be in your.
Did you make a motion, sir?
Yeah, I made a motion to have an ordinance drawn up to establish a one-hour loading zone there, and if the city attorney wants that pertinent language to further describe that, I will leave that up to his latitude.
Any further discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Moves us on to number fourteen, discussion of SWEPco power line clearing issue, motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second?
Second?
Flows open.
Several people have queried me in regards to what's been going on this last week. The, I don't even know how to say it, the splendeth? How, is that how you say it?
Esplund.
Okay, those people, the tree quitting, tree cutting people. Have they been hired by SWEPco to do our tree trimming around the lines? Does anybody know?
Apparently so, because they're the one doing it, yeah.
Okay. So what has been put to me, and I have been so tied up the last two weeks, I haven't gotten out anywhere, is these people are not trimming, they are cutting. And I mean, to the point of ugly and the trees are gonna die. They are trimming all the way back to the trunk, way down further than they need to and everything else, and we have an awful lot of citizenry that are furious. As far as they're concerned, and I can thoroughly understand it and practically agree, this is payback by SWEPco. Now, I don't know how I was timed with the group.
Very careful where you go with this.
I'm saying this, I am saying.
Stick to the facts, please.
This is what the people have said to me. I didn't say it. I was saying it, or I verified, said I could see it, but they are really upset. Now, what can we do as the council, as the city, in regards protecting our trees from being overly trimmed? There's got to be something we can do.
By whose definition? Overly trimmed, by whose definition? The power line people? That supply the electricity that everybody likes around here?
You don't want me to answer that.
Then when one tree limb gets in it, it goes.
If, if we have, okay, like, like Chris is our tree expert. If he said, if he goes and he looks at trees that have been trimmed by the power lines and says, oh my God, they didn't have to be trimmed that severely. So I'm asking, can we do something like that? I don't know.
Let's discuss it further then. Mr. Perkypod?
Well, you know, they've got an eighteen-to-twenty-foot setback there, and, and you're right, some of these trees have been cut and they look terrible, and some of them are in spring reservation. Some, some were cut identical to four years ago when they came through, three years ago when it was lost. Some very old red buds and very nice maples and all sorts of stuff. They have every right to do that, because without it, we would not have a essential service. And it, it's not, it doesn't look pretty, but those trees are growing and will grow. Some of them, I would agree, were not really threatening anything but the telecom lines, the lower lines, big fat cables. But they have the right to come in and, and do that trimming. And frankly, I'm glad they did. In, in some areas, it was, it was well needed.
I could still think of a few that I'm assuming they will get to.
But there's nothing we can do at this table. You can take those calls and say, listen, I'm sorry, but they do have the right to do that.
Okay, so that's what I'm asking. So we can't have guidelines via city ordinance in regards to not allowing such massive cutbacks that are really likely to cause an awful lot of trees to die? We, we can't put a guideline like this or something? We have no say?
Mr. McClung, you were next, sir.
Well, nothing really to say, but I mean, that's just pure projection as far as whether the trees are gonna die or not. Granted, some of these employees may, you know, may or may not be arborists, but yet, you know, they do this for a living and, and so.
Okay, so I'm still looking at the attorney.
Well, wait, let me do this. Let me take care of that part of it, okay? Mr. DeVito, you're next.
We've had a very great summer with lots of rain. We look like a tropical jungle around here. You go in and cut something, and it's gonna be noticeable. By next year, this will all be forgotten, because ninety-nine percent of those trees will regenerate and be leafed back out. And, and it's just the nature of anything, that, that when you make a radical cut like that, yeah, it's gonna be very noticeable. But these are professionals, they do this all the time. But these are professionals, they do this all the time, and they are not connected in any way with the power company that they work with. They're just a subcontractor.
Now, if you wanna address, Mr. Weaver, go ahead.
Go for it.
The long and short of it is you can't do anything about it.
We cannot set any kind of guideline.
They have the power to clear their right of ways.
Well, you know, I understand the trimming and the need for it and all that. It's just, geez, go out and look at college. I mean, it seems to me there should be a line that can be drawn or should be drawn. And especially for a Tree City USA town.
They will sometimes allow the property owner through which their easement runs to decide if the tree is gonna be so badly damaged that it needs to be leveled and taken out. And they will, they will have that option. But as far as how much they cut back, they decide.
Any further?
Okay, thank you.
Moves us on to agenda setting. Mr. DeVito?
What do they do with the yard waste?
Mr. McClung?
Nothing.
Mr. Mitchell?
Nothing.
Mr. Perkypal?
Yeah, I have two items. One is, I wanna have a discussion of Public Works' needs for a new sewer camera and jetter. It's something that we probably can't afford, but we certainly need to start thinking about. The jetter is aged and the camera is almost irreparable now.
I'll second that.
The second one is, I'd like to set a, I'd like to set a, or not set, I'd like to have a discussion about the need for a workshop with the city, the CAPC and the Chamber to talk about tourism and business and status and plan to improve said tourism and business in the city.
I'll second that, too.
Okay. Ms. Snyder?
Yeah, I'd like to add a continuing discussion of fluoride. I think next meeting will probably be the meat and bones.
Ms. Eller?
No, I don't have anything.
Do you need a second?
Counsel comments, Mr. DeVito. Yes?
We're still waiting on a second for her.
We do or we don't?
You can, we got a second.
Okay. Yeah, we do.
Okay, Mr. DeVito?
No comment.
Mr. McClung?
Nothing.
Mr. Mitchell?
I'd like to thank the various department heads who took the time to give council some follow-up to various ordinances and monies that were allocated their direction. It's appreciated to get feedback on issues that we pass here at the table. And to keep up, it's not micromanaging or it's not getting in the way of the mayor's operating the city. It's just asking for feedback to council when we've gone out there and done stuff.
Mr. Perkypal? Counsel comment?
No.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes, my son finally did it. He got married last weekend. Anybody wanting to have a really fabulous place for a family reunion, a big huge wedding, a gigantic gathering, can't go wrong with Cinnamon Valley. 140 No, I'm serious, that's how impressed I was. 140 acres of just our two sides of the family. Oh my God, it was incredible. And he was so choked up, he could barely say yes. But he said yes. This last weekend was the Eurican and it went off beautifully. Brought in over 1,000 people into town, beautiful weather, nicely sunburned. That was that one. And the biggest thing I want to announce is Sue Glave is home. She is out of the hospital, out of rehab. She is home. Goodness. We have already continued on with our work in regards to the Veterans Parade. She wanted me to make sure I let locals know we would really like to see our local restaurants donate food for the meet and greet after we get done at the end of the parade. She and I have done most of it with a couple of other people doing a lot. And we're gonna have to cut back on a lot of what she does. So she's asking restaurants to chip in. And please, everybody, hamburger cookoff, this thing is getting bigger over here. We're having a ball with it. And it's not just restaurants, it's people, too. That's the biggest thing. She's home. She's doing good. She looks like she went on a really radical diet. But that's okay, she's home and she's good. And I'm happy.
Any further?
No, that's
Ms. Eller?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay. My comments. The Public Works Department and I believe it's Ozarks Southern Stone has been working in front of the elementary school and middle school to repair some road defects. They have laid a reinforced concrete pad in front of the elementary school and they will be working on the other one. And may have poured that today right at the corner of Lakelook Stern and Greenwood Hollow Road. And then Public Works has, working with a company to do a quarter-inch overlay of asphalt on that stretch of road. So that'll be another stretch of road that has been paved. Another comment that I have received from several people from the public is that they're not happy because we paved Passion Play Road and Pivot Rock Road. In fact, the comments were, I paved my way to Jesus since I worked for the Police Department on Passion Play and I paved Pivot Rock Road because that's the one I live on. So anybody that has any common sense in town will know that those two roads are used repeatedly and often with overflow traffic and bypass traffic to avoid going downtown from 62 to Main Street via Passion Play Road and Magnetic Springs. I will be conversating or conversing with the county in attempts to repair, in some degree, the portion of their road that is from where we ended our pavement to the back end of Passion Play Road. There's apparently some problems with the road that has been addressed and addressed and addressed. And it's getting to the point that it's gonna fall off in the creek in front of Alvin Bird's Place. So we're gonna try to work with that one. We can't pave that one because it's not ours, so y'all don't have to worry about it. Okay? Now, I think that's all on the pavement, on the road part of it. Can't think of anything else right now because I'm ready to go to the house. August the 14th through the 16th is Bluegrass Festival. Also, August the 15th is the last day for candidates to file for their office to run in the election. August the 14th and 17th is the Second Annual Beading. That's B-E-A-D-I-N-G in the Ozarks. August the 14th is All Things New Concert at the Auditorium at 7:00 p.m. August the 15th through 17th is the Third Annual Summertime in the Ozarks. The 16th is the 33rd Annual Texaco Country Showdown from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. at Pine Mountain Jamboree Theater. The 17th is Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory movie at the Auditorium at 7:00 p.m. And that's the first one, it was a good one, not the second crappy one.
It's a, it's a good one.
Yeah. 22nd through the 24th is VW Weekend Parade Saturday at 3:00. And 24th is cellist Sarah St. Ambrosia performs at the Auditorium. I think she's part of the
Orca Trio.
Yes, the Orca Trio. And that's at the Auditorium at 2:00 on the 24th. Motion to adjourn?
Just one second. Just in conjunction with the Bluegrass Festival, Thursday night is the Watermelon Feed and jam at Basin Park, 6:00. And it's a lot of fun.
Yes.
Thursday is also the day Japan surrendered to end World War II. So I throw that in there.
Okay. Motion to adjourn. Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?